If I could ask you to please read the call of the special meeting.
Certainly. West Haven City Council notes finance committee meeting can be held Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. Eight times six thirty. Location is remote. According to Rule Number 11 of the rules covering the City Council Chairman Colleen O'Leary and Finance Chairwoman Hosky have called the Finance Committee meeting of the West Haven City Council to be held at six thirty PM on Wednesday, September 9th, 2020 via electronic means. In accordance with standing rule number thirty, the purpose of this special meeting is as follows. Discussion on potential West Haven Police Department pension options.
Who says we don't have fun at these meetings? It sounded like one of those forty-five records. But thank you, Stacy. I think we got the whole, the whole call of the meeting in there. Since this is a finance committee meeting, I will turn the rest of the meeting over to our Finance Chair, Councilwoman Hosky.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, first off, I want to just thank our special guests for attending this evening. It is truly appreciated. It's been a long time coming. Basically, this is just the first step in a really long, long process. So we're hoping to get some really good information. Just some housekeeping, just so that everyone, you know, we can do this. We have a lot of people on this call this evening. So I'm going to ask Mayor Rossi to say some words on, you know, how the city got here. She was on the City Council many years ago and was a, was a voice of reason in trying to get the city to vote down moving away from a pension. And then we also have our friends from Branford here. And I'm not sure if the first selectman or the Finance Director would just kind of want to give us like a high level overview on, you know, what happened in Branford. And then we are going to take questions from the City Council and from the guests. I'm going to ask that everyone limit their questions to one at a time. We do have a lot of people on the call. So I just want to give everybody the opportunity to jump in. I am hoping that, you know, we can do this in about ninety minutes, give or take, just to respect everybody's time this evening. So without further ado, Mayor Rossi, if you'd like to just give us some insight as to what happened with, in West Haven.
Okay, thank you very much, Chairwoman Hosky. I'd like to thank our guests for coming as well. It is greatly appreciated because we're trying to look at doing things differently in West Haven. I was on the City Council when the pension went to the 401K. And it was back in two thousand and nine and the same attorneys here. Because Attorney Hodgson was there as well. And the problem that I always saw with it was if you can show me that you're saving money and still giving a good benefit, then, then it would be a smart move. Unfortunately, we didn't save any money. The actuarial study that was prepared at that time when I got it did not include all of the costs. And one of the major ones was the six point two employer side of the, of the Social Security. So that was one of the problems. They didn't include enough overtime. They compared it more to, like, they were using a salary, a basis salary of like a sixty thousand dollars, which most police officers with overtime can get up to the cap, the Social Security cap. So there were, there were several problems that, that I saw. And the problem was although we had the votes to send it back to arbitration, because it went through arbitration and the arbitration award was granted to the city. What ended up happening is the way I understood it and recall it, it was similar to an appeal in a court case. You can appeal a court case, but a lot of times you can't add any new evidence. So because the actuarial study, and there was only one actuarial study, and that was prepared by the city's actuaries, was, was there. We argued words, if you will, but you couldn't show what the difference would have been had you put in the Social Security and put in the, you know, bumped up the salaries to more realistic with police because they do work a lot of overtime. I did that. And, and in fact, I remember because I asked that night when I, when I was looking at it, I said to me, maybe it was tax season too. So it was like April of two thousand and nine. I said, there, I'm looking at this. And I says to me, it doesn't look like there's any savings to the city. And I was told it was, you know, neutral. It, there really wouldn't be a lot of savings to the city. So it was unfortunate because the council was involved kind of too late in the game, if you will. So we did, we did send it back to arbitration, but it lost. And it was because we couldn't actually give any kind of figures or, or give any additional information at the time. So since then, we have spent, as you all know, and I think pretty much everybody is aware of this, we have spent a lot of money on training new recruits. And then they leave and then we train some more and then they leave. And so we have a revolving door. So I'm hopeful our guests are going to tell us what they did in, in Branford. And maybe we can take a look at everything. And I agree with Finance Chair Hosky. This is just the first step of, we have a lot of, you know, work ahead of us in research to do to see what we can do because we would like to stabilize our police department. I think I speak for pretty much everyone on the call. We want to stabilize our police department. We absolutely do. So thank you for the time, Finance Chair Hosky.
Chairman, did you?
Yes, thank you. Before, before you go to Branford, I just want to also acknowledge on, on the, the meeting this evening, we have Chief Joe Perno, Deputy Chief Carl Fleming, the Chairman of the Police Commission. I'm sorry, we have Commissioner of Paul Butler of the Police Commission and the Union President, Sean Fawnen as well. Thank you. Where to go?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mayor Rossi, and thank you, Chairman Hosky. My name is Jim Finch. I'm the Finance Director for the town of Branford. Hopefully my voice is coming through okay and I don't sound like I'm in the Witness Protection Program. So hopefully I see some heads nodding, so that's a good thing. You know, I've been around Branford for about twenty-three years. Been involved in a lot of big decisions. I think my batting average is good, but I'm also been around to change my mind when, when things on the ground don't go as well as we thought they would be at the time our decisions were made. And I think that's a fair characterization of our pension decisions and ultimately our decision to go back to a defined benefit plan. As there are a lot of folks on the call, I think it's, I think most people probably know this, but it's probably important to establish really the difference between these two types of plans. Defined contribution, as its name would suggest, the city or the employer agrees to a certain percentage of salary. And in many cases, that would include overtime as well. Then those dollars, in addition to the employee's share, is deposited in a series of investment choices. So in that case, the city or the employer is committing to a dollar amount. The employees are committing to a dollar amount. And the success or failure of an employee's retirement is predicated on the quality of the investments they make, market conditions, et cetera. The key element there is that the risk of providing for the retirement income security is entirely borne by the employee and not the employer. Contrary to that, a defined benefit plan, the contributions can fluctuate from the employer's side, largely determined by an actuarial valuation. The employee's share towards the pension is largely determined by a collective bargaining agreement. All those assets are managed by the employer and the risk is basically assumed by the employer. And the employer tries to manage that by funding the plan and assuming the risks. And particularly as it relates to police officers, you know, one, it's a risky profession. And then when you add on top of that, the risks that, that they face in terms of finances, which are not unique to police, but it's, it's an added risk. The risks are running out of money. Maybe they didn't save enough or the investments didn't do well enough, making bad investments, and disability. And the disability piece is a major component of a defined benefit plan. You will find it very hard to replicate a suitable disability benefit in a defined contribution plan. So those are some of the key elements. I wanted to start out with that understanding at, at the risk of, of being overly simple and basic. Like I said, you have participants on the call, folks may be viewing from home. So I just kind of want to lay, lay that out. So when Branford switched to a defined contribution plan, it was in the year two thousand and eleven. So it was fairly close to the time where West Haven went to a DC plan. And some of the things we were looking at, the town was coming out of the financial crisis, you know, seven, oh, eight, oh, nine. We had, oh, nine, we had just recently established another pension-like trust, but it was called the OPEP Trust, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. So we had set up a trust to fund legacy costs for retirees. And we were looking for a way to shed some of the risk on the pension side because we were now assuming it on the health benefit side. Now, in reality, the town always had that risk, but since we were creating a OPEP Trust that was also going to be invested similar to a pension, we thought, well, if we're going to, if we're going to have this fund, we could offset some of the risk, you know, in the pension plan. Some of the assumptions and thinking behind that was one that, you know, in talking to our police chief at the time, there was a thought that it wouldn't necessarily hinder our recruiting efforts because, you know, this would be an attractive benefit to younger workers. We also thought, and this was a major assumption, that, that events seemed to conspire against us, was that we would actually get what we would call lateral transfers from other communities. So in other words, you know, somebody who may have retired from, from another community, say at age fifty, but wanted to work five years somewhere else, they would basically, or even less, they would actually be more inclined to work in a town that offers a defined contribution plan because they, they wouldn't necessarily be concerned about meeting all the vesting requirements. So that would be attractive to them. One of the, one of the fallbacks, I'm sorry, one of the downfalls of that decision was that the Connecticut MERS program, the C MERS program, which a lot of towns are members of, Branford's a MERS member for its non-police, basically came up with a decision that said essentially that if your town is a MERS member, you cannot collect a MERS pension and work for another MERS member community. And Branford was a MERS member community, even though our police officers were not MERS participants because they had their own plan. So what that did is, is, is basically shut off a whole list of potential lateral transfers coming to Branford based on the decision. We had sought a legislative remedy to that and it passed both the Senate and the General Assembly, but it was vetoed at, by the governor and they did not go into a special session to override the veto. So that was a major drawback in our strategy. Then as the years went on, we found that we had difficulties retaining and recruiting officers because folks would basically gravitate to towns that had a defined pension benefit. So essentially, you know, you can imagine when somebody's looking for a job, you know, maybe they're doing sort of a, a quick self-selection and they may say, well, okay, does this town have a defined benefit? And if they didn't, they probably would just move on to other communities. So we weren't actually getting the recruits that, that we needed. And again, we had folks that were also leaving. So all those things were actually working against us. And, and as we all know, the, the purpose of the pension is, is really to attract and retain officers so they can actually provide their public safety duty. So there's really a, a public interest in, in having a pension plan or a benefit package that can attract and retain employees. Now, specific to law enforcement and the current day and age, you know, some of those things are within your control. What you pay officers and what benefits you offer, and some of the things are, are beyond the control. And, you know, recently the Connecticut Legislature passed laws that impact police officers. And my purpose is not to debate the pros and cons of their efforts, rather that we are seeing in multiple departments and the folks I've been in touch with is it is basically making it difficult to recruit police officers. And so that's an external factor that's outside of your control. But, you know, if you're at a disadvantage from a, a benefit standpoint and then you add that on top of it, it really puts you in a, in a challenging position. The other way we looked at it was how does this affect people individually? And prior to the change, when we started seeing our retention and recruiting efforts suffer, I had actually engaged the actuaries, our, our town actuaries, to do a study of going back to a DB plan under a certain type of structure. And, and but I, I basically had kept that because the police were already locked into a bargaining agreement. When we started negotiating a new contract, the union essentially asked the town if we could look at doing something with the pension, even though the pension agreement was not something that was open at the time. And so as we, as we said to the officers that we would look at this and come up with some kind of design, I had engaged the actuaries again to update their analysis on that. And essentially, one of the ways approached it is almost like looking at it like you have fifty officers, we have basically fifty personal finance stories. And when I addressed some of the risks earlier, you know, you know, psychological, so, so benefits have to, one, provide a monetary benefit and I think a behavioral or psychological benefit. And I think the DB plan did both because if you think about, you know, what are some of the fears someone has from a financial perspective? Well, one of the fears is making bad investments. Another fear is, is running out of money. And another fear is becoming disabled. And the defined benefit structure is able to accomplish all of those tasks. And then the challenges, as the mayor pointed out, is how you structure that in a way that can be, to the effect, it can be cost neutral or have a, have a minimal increase in cost and yet meet those needs, as I described earlier, of the bargaining unit. And that doesn't even take into account the cost of turnover. It doesn't take into account the cost of operational challenges. Ultimately, if you have trouble retaining and recruiting folks, you know, you're always going to have an inexperienced workforce because folks will come on for a couple of years, then they leave, they come on for a couple of years and leave. And, and that's not good for the department. You obviously want folks to come in, stay with the department, then progress through the ranks so that your, that your leadership, your sergeants, your lieutenants, captains, et cetera, have that institutional memory and, and an understanding of your, of your community. And again, the DC plan was essentially failing in that regard. And so ours, like I, like I said, really came out of the bargaining process. So, so in working with the actuaries, we developed a benefit structure that basically provided them with a, a DB plan, but it was not the same plan that the officers hired before two thousand and eleven had. So we basically came up with a, a two-tiered structure. The difference essentially was that the town now was assuming the, the risk. So the town was assuming the investment risks and not the officers. And in our case, because the DC plan was put in place in two thousand and eleven, just to give it a little bit of a scale, we were dealing with seventeen officers. And so roughly now we have about fifty officers. So we basically had about one-third of the force that was in that DC plan. I anticipate a question about, well, when the folks came into the DC plan, I'm sorry, from the DC plan to the DB plan, you know, how, how, how were they treated? And I thought it was very important at the time, and I still think it is, to basically, what we said to them was your seniority in the, in the second-tier DB plan that we are offering starts from the day you are hired. In exchange for that, all the assets in the DC plan get folded into the defined benefit plan. So we'll just make numbers up for a second. So if, if those seventeen officers had a million dollars in the defined contribution plan, that million dollars comes into the town's defined benefit pension plan. They will get credit from the day they were hired and then they will accrue the same, the benefits under that second-tier structure moving forward. And it took a little bit of an educational process too because, as you might guess, some folks would say, well, wait a second. My, you know, Catherine's investments did better than Jim's investments. And you mean to tell me if Catherine and Jim got hired on the same day, they're getting the same benefit? And the answer is yes, because that's the nature of a DB plan. And that's what happens in a DB plan every day. If you had a plan where your pension was based on your last three years, and so somebody was a patrol officer for most of their career, and then the last three years they became a sergeant. And then someone who became a sergeant in their fifth year and, and retired as a sergeant, if those sergeants earn the same salary their last three years, they would get the same benefit, even though the, the officer that was a sergeant longer obviously paid more into the pension plan because the pension is a, is a factor of payroll. The other piece of this, the other aspect that we wanted to address, as I mentioned earlier, was the fear of disability. And because it was a, a second-tier plan, we, we came up with a slightly reduced disability benefit of forty percent. So if I was an officer in the second-tier plan and I, I am in a car accident and I'm disabled from performing police work, I would get forty percent of my salary. Under the old plan, it was fifty percent. But again, that, that was sufficient enough, you know, for the officers to, to agree to the change. I might also add that in Branford, our police officers are members of Social Security and, and they always were. So I, I, I heard Social Security was mentioned earlier, so I just want to lay that out there. And then the second piece was really, once we, we got the agreement, and there was a little bumps and bruises along the way, but overall, it was a, you know, there was a common understanding. We worked together well with the union. I could admit it now. I mean, there was one little bump where I, I was invited to go to coffee and a couple of people are, hey, we got a problem. You know, I, I never make any commitments I can't keep. So I said I would, I would actually look into it and study it. And it really had an issue that affected maybe, maybe five officers that we actually had a special section of the agreement for them as well. And then for the folks that are in your shoes, the council, you know, we have a, what's called a representative town meeting in Branford. The, the next thing was, was pitching it to them because it was something that they would vote on as, as approving the agreement. And while the costs were a little bit more, so just to put it in perspective, when we ran the numbers, it was about another twenty-five thousand per year. And that was with the seventeen officers. So, you know, it's a matter of scale. The, we are fortunate in that the assets that came in from the DC plan offset the accrued liability from, and, and allowing them to get credit from day one. And the one takeaway, which we said during negotiations was, you know, think of this second tier, if you're in a DC plan, think of this second tier as if the DC plan never happened. So in other words, you're going to get credit from, from the day you're hired and this is your plan going forward, it's as if that plan never existed. You know, the money that's in it is no longer yours, it's coming over to the town and you're getting, and, and in exchange for that, you're getting credit. And we will now assume the risk for your retirement income security, will assume the risk for disability, and will assume the investment risk. And with the hope that you will basically enjoy working for the town of Branford and that you will someday retire in the town of Branford. So overall, in terms of what we are experiencing, I would say that the agreement met the needs of the bargaining unit and it immediately started improving retention and recruitment. Also, the, you know, the costs of agreement were manageable. The liability was offset by the transfer of the DC assets. And the agreement will stay in effect until two thousand and thirty-one. So we were also able to essentially extend the term of the pension agreement. So we weren't necessarily going to have to go back in three years and start negotiating all over again. So I hope that, my assistant financer is texting me, I guess my picture is, is coming out or I was turning purple. I, I assure you, there's enough air in the room. So I apologize for the, the weak internet connection. And I, and I hope I, I am sounding okay and not like the Witness Protection Program. But I, but I, I applaud, I applaud the, the West Haven government for, for looking at this. You know, it, it is always a challenge to kind of go back and, and revisit decisions that were made. And I will say it did pass the Branford RTM unanimously, which included people who had voted for the agreement back in two thousand and eleven, which created the DC plan. So I think it's, it's always, it's always good when you could kind of, you know, you make a decision, you have a sound process and, and what you're trying to achieve, and then you evaluate that decision and you recognize that in hindsight and events beyond your control, governor's veto, are things that you did not anticipate. Because at the time, that's not how the, the state was interpreting the MERS pension. For those of you who are following the news at the time, there was a mayor in an area town who had a running battle with the governor over his pension. And quite honestly, unfortunately, that, that spilled over and had an adverse impact on, on towns like Branford. But I do want to emphasize that this agreement went through the Public Services Committee, Branford RTM. I believe there was strong support of the bargaining unit. And ultimately, the RTM voted for it unanimously and we were able to make the move. We explained it to the rating agencies. There's a paragraph in, in the Bond Prospectus that year, there's a paragraph in our notes to the audit as well. And I know Jamie is on the call and, you know, so he's, he's the only elected person from Branford who was involved in this. And if it's okay with the chairwoman, if, if I could kick it over to him if there's something he wants to add. But that's sort of the high-level overview that you asked for. Hopefully I gave you enough detail to generate a good conversation on this. And, you know, look forward to hearing how you guys are approaching this and what you're thinking. I think it's fair to say that you've identified the problem, which is the first step towards the solution. And it sounds like that you're on a path to learning as much as you can. To the extent that Branford's experience is something relatable to, to your experience, then then I'll say in advance, we're glad to have helped.
Thank you so much. And who were you referring to, your first selectman or your assistant finance chair?
The first, the first selectman.
Sure, absolutely.
How you doing? Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. First Selectman Jamie Cosgrove, it's a pleasure to be here. Actually, I was going to jump in at the beginning and then kick it over to Jim to give the overview, since he has the, the long history with it. But as always, Jim does a very thorough job and excellent job explaining the history and our thought process. I, I would just say from my, I came in in 2011, or 2013. As Jim had stated, the town went to a defined contribution plan in 2011. So this was something that even when I came in in 13, the police chief at the time had voiced that he had concerns over the recruitment and retention of officers. One reason, major reason being the lack of a pension plan. But, you know, we, the one thing I'd say the greatest challenge, I, I think that, you know, maybe I faced, as although it was, ended up being unanimous approved, was really educating everybody that we're, you know, we did offer a retirement plan, right? And, you know, it was just a defined contribution, as Jim mentioned, you know, that's really putting the risk on the individual. However, there is still a, a contribution, I think to the mayor's point, there's still a cost of providing a retirement to the officers, whether it's a defined contribution or defined benefit. It's just more the transfer of the risk and being sure that we're faithfully funding the defined benefit plan. So I think that was a challenge, not only, and I hear it talking to some of my colleagues and in other communities, it seems, you know, when I was discussing that we're considering going back to a defined benefit plan, that they, you know, would question why we would do that, you know, why we, we look at it, it seems like they're looking, whether they're a town that had a defined benefit, if they should be getting out of it, or maybe they had gone after and haven't realized this, the same level of issues that we have. You know, and I think that's far to do with, you know, what's being out there, even with the state, we constantly are any day with what are the state's financial woes, and we know a large part of that is, has to do with the, the liability primarily around the pension plans. But, but let's, what was the cause of that? That was a lack of funding, right? They didn't fund it for years, and that's what created that liability and the burden that's on us. If we stay committed to funding the plans, which quite honestly, you know, we have to, we're contributing those dollars under a defined contribution plan, so if we just, as Jim laid out, take those dollars and put them in a defined, faithfully put them in a defined benefit plan, you know, it doesn't really have a significant cost impact to the town. And, and again, as you, I'm sure, you know, the mayor had mentioned, you know, you're not even factoring in training and recruitment and turnover costs that often happen. So once you start to add those, and I just saw that it was a benefit for not only our police department, but the community as a whole. Thank you for your time. Elaborate or answer any other questions that the council may have.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So I'm just going to, you know, go again over the housekeeping rules. We can absolutely, you know, ask Branford any questions we have. Again, Chief Perno, Deputy Fleming is on, Sean, I'm sorry. Bond from the union is here. Chris Hodgson is the labor attorney, and Lee Tierney Corp Counsel is also on. I just asked that if you do have questions, anyone can ask a question. We are going to start with the finance committee, with, which is Councilman Hamilton, Councilman Massaro, Cohen, and Bruno, and then we'll open it up to the rest of the council, as well as Chief Perno, Commissioner Butler. I can't see you guys, so if you do want to ask a question, you can go to the chat option or possibly even text the chairman saying that you want to be recognized if you would like to make, have a question or make a comment. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment prior to us asking questions? Chief Perno or Commissioner Butler? Lee or Chris? Okay, I just wanted to be sure. Hold on, someone did send me a chat. If I could open it. Okay, so we're going to open it up to the finance committee. Does anyone have any questions? I know Councilman Massaro messaged me that he would like to be recognized. So Councilman Massaro, did you still want to be recognized? I can't see.
Yes, I would. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Councilman. Sorry. If you can just pick out one for now, we're going to do one at a time, please.
Okay.
And then I'll recognize you the next round. Thank you.
You got a, if you got a police officer that got 11 years on the job and he paid 11 years in the 401K, is there a problem to transfer that money from the 401K to start a pension? And does the, does the police officer keep the 11 years of service versus a guy that's got five years with a smaller 401K? Do you start him at the beginning, or you start him with his five years with the money he's got in there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take that one. Basically, if someone had 11 years in and someone had five years in, you know, both of them would get pension credit from the day they were hired. So the person with 11 years would have, would get more credit than the person with five years. Comparatively, they had the larger balance. So if you think about buying years, the person who had the bigger balance because they had 11 years gets a bigger accrued benefit at that point in time because it's more expensive to buy 11 years than it is five years. Although we didn't actually price it that way, we basically, the agreement was, you know, collectively, the assets of those 17 officers would actually, you know, come into the plan. But from an officer perspective, again, I'll go back to the phrase that I said at the ending. The way to think about it, as we said to the officers, if you're coming in, with the exception of the people we carved out for other reasons, but if you're coming in to the second-tier DB plan, it is as if that plan existed from the day you were hired. So, so, so that officer would get 11 years' worth of credit, and when they retire, those 11 years times their multiplier would be calculated towards their pension.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Massaro. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to also thank all of the Branford folks for coming this evening. This is invaluable information, and I know it's, it's a great start, and I also thank Councilwoman Hosky for holding this meeting tonight. My question, there was a comment made, I mean, basically, you started this journey, if you will, in 2011, and you mentioned turnover, and I know it's only partial data, but can you give me, can you give us some idea about a rough percentage of a decrease? Obviously, your turnover is not as much. Can you give us an idea about how much less turnover and perhaps how that translates into, let's say, savings for training? You know, so we have an idea of, because the biggest thing we could have, the most important asset is our officers, and to have veteran officers and well-trained officers that don't go away after two or three years is, is a great thing. So I'm, I'm curious to know how your turnover is and how that translated into either savings or enhancements.
Thank you. We, we didn't necessarily calculate the cost of the turnover. We, we basically focused on the cost of the pension change, but we did, we did note that, you know, if you could classify that as another consideration, we do know that there is a cost to turnover. And the other thing, point I, I had stressed during all of this is sometimes the costs are invisible to the budget but real nonetheless. What I mean by that is if you always have, you know, I'll give you a hypothetical example, but I think it bears some resemblance to reality, but if you always have officers who are at the academy, let's just say we have 50 officers and we have three at the academy, well, the budget doesn't care if they're at the academy or if they're on the street, but the public cares if they're at the academy or on the street. And so it, it presents operational challenges, and, and, and the newer folks also many times have to ride, they have their field training, so they're riding with a more experienced officer. So we didn't necessarily calculate that. You know, that was more something that would be in line with the PD, but we knew it existed. So we knew, we knew there was a cost to that, but, you know, rather than use that as, and, and I think it's an important consideration, but we just recognized that there are added costs that we did not include in the analysis, and reasonable people would conclude that those costs were negative to the town. And so essentially, but we focus on, on the pension as, as kind of our, our approach. And we did lose somebody because of the MERS ruling, which I, I talked about earlier, but we just, we just had a hard time getting folks. And again, we didn't have a ton of vacancies. The, the other thing that I should mention is, because it wasn't part of this pension change, but we had also done in between the agreements, are you guys familiar with the term drop? It's, it's called a deferred retirement option plan. So basically, what we tried to do is stem the loss of experienced officers. So essentially, let's just say I'm ready to retire, my pension benefit is $60,000 a year. I can still work for the town. I'm no longer contributing to the pension plan. I'm no longer earning years into the pension plan, and when I retire, I will start collecting my pension plus the three years I deferred. So I would get $180,000 plus my, my pension. The reason we did that is we were looking at, you know, where folks were, were in the census, and we realized if a lot of folks went, that we would have a fairly severe exodus. And so we, that was something we had done in between 2000, well, 2011, we had a one-year drop. We actually increased it to, up to a five-year deferred retirement option plan, just as an incentive to keep experienced officers, because we didn't want them all going at the same time. So, so to answer your specific question, no, we didn't calculate the additional cost of training, but we were aware of it, and we were aware that there were operational challenges because of it.
Thank you.
Councilman Bruno?
Thank you very much for all the Branford folks that don't give us any help.
Councilman Bruno, you don't have a really bad connection. If you are speaking, Councilman Bruno, we cannot hear you. Councilman Bruno, while you figure out how to get a best connection, Chief Perno wanted to make a comment, I'm going to just let him speak while you maybe get a different setup. Does that work? Put up a thumb. Chief Perno, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We don't have Zoom at the PD. I attempted to speak before, but the paperclip that holds our phone together kind of fell off the wire. Since 2009, when the 401 was introduced for the police department, we have had 28 officers come and go for the main reason being the pension and the pay that the, the department gets. This information was given to the board in an exit interview that they conducted with, with each officers that, that left. The officers that are here for the year of training that left, the 28 of them, it's $80,000 per officer out of the police department budget, which totals $2,240,000 out of the police budget for the time that the 401 has been here. Oh, that is not including what the city pays, which is probably another 20 or better, for 20,000 or better for the other benefits, health, social security, et cetera. The main reason, like I said, the main reason for them leaving has been the lack of a pension. If we did have a pension from 2009, we would be over $2 million richer in the coffers of the city and the, the police department, and I wouldn't have to worry about a phone system that doesn't work. Right now, we are at 120. We are at full staff. I know that Branford is just over 50, 58, so we're just about twice the size of Branford. We have, of those, of those 120, we have between the officers that we have a military leave that are deployed. We also have six to eight officers that are in training of various stages that while they count into our 120, they are not officers that we can use on the street. I think that the recruitment that the police department does is tremendous in these times, both in the society looking at the police departments and police work. But with what they do and how they sell this department with having a 401, it's tremendous, and it would only be a benefit to the city and to the department in order for them to offer a pension. This was brought to light with the younger officers when we had an officer in motorcycle training, and he was just, it was in New York, he was on the, one of the major highways in New York, and he was injured, and he was just training. It wasn't answering a call. There was no other weapons involved. He was training with other officers on the motorcycle, and he was injured so severely that he had to retire. The younger officers that were friendly with him looked at themselves and their significant others and said, what would happen if that happened to me? And that kind of put a light bulb on in everybody's head. I also want to make a point that I know everybody has seen the, the footage from the summer of the water rescue, the officers that went into the water, they did not have a pension, they were on a 401. So the officers that are on the 401 are still doing their job, but it would be very nice for them and their families if they had the backing of the city for any kind of a defined benefit of a pension in case something would happen. Commissioner Butler, which, well, we're all set for that, and we are here for any questions or comments that you may want to direct our way. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Chief, for that information. That water rescue was amazing, and thank God it turned out and everyone survived because it would have been, I don't know what we would have done as a city to help that, those officers. For Councilman Bruno still having technical difficulties, excuse me, so I'm going to ask his question for him. Councilman Bruno is actually the liaison for... Um, Councilman Bruno is actually the liaison for the city council for the West Haven PD. And he was wondering, um, this question is for the, um, our visitors from Branford. If you did all of this work to move from um, the pension, I mean, move from the 401K to the pension internally, um, what outside help did you seek? And what was the turnaround time? Like how many months, um, you know, we know that you were in um, um, contract negotiations. So how long did it take um, for you to work this all out?
You know, my, my recollection of, of the months might be a little sketchy. I find that the years kind of go by, months go by faster as I get older. But um, the, initially uh, there were negotiations for the police collective bargaining agreement. And that agreement is actually separate from the pension agreement. And you know, that was going on. I was going to some of the meetings, not all of them. Uh, typically it was our uh, labor attorney and the personnel director. Uh, I went to the sessions where we talked about financial issues. And uh, so, but once they had uh, mentioned the issue of the pension, uh, I would say it was definitely less than a year. Actually, one of the challenges that we had was, was quite unplanned. And it, and it gets back to uh, the council, councilman's questions about outside help. I, I don't want to give the impression that this was all done uh, on Jim Finch's computer. Uh, the concept and, and working with folks may have is the actuary I was working with moved to another firm. Okay? So when I wanted the analysis to be updated, uh, I had to reestablish uh, the approach with a, with a new actuary. Uh, and then he ended up having surgery as well. So there were some unanticipated delays. But uh, once it was presented to the bargaining unit, it was essentially um, it was, it was essentially well-received. Uh, we had another meeting for them to answer questions. I, I will say that these are always difficult decisions. Uh, and Jamie Cosgrove is on the call. And uh, I will say internally, uh, while this is a little bit of inside baseball for Branford, is uh, there was not universal agreement uh, at the time uh, whether to present this option among the management team. And um, so there, there were basically five votes on this and Jamie broke the tie. Uh, and that's why uh, that, that basically led to this. So uh, I want to give him some kudos uh, on that. But it's very important uh, that you have an understanding of your numbers and your senses. And you know, while a lot of what happened in Branford could be relatable uh, to West Haven. And, and quite honestly, the uh, the fact that you're at full staff uh, with the 401 is pro, is probably uh, pretty incredible. Uh, I suspect the chief is giving out free beach passes to achieve that, but I don't know. So uh, but anyway, the uh, uh, but you, but you really, you gotta sort of approach this as a team. The, the other thing I, I, I didn't mention, which I think is important uh, for, for the mayor and the council when you consider this, is I mentioned earlier that uh, that the town was a MERS member. Well, that means everybody else in town had a defined benefit plan. So the police at the time were the only ones without a defined benefit plan or those officers that were hired uh, after 2011. So I think that's also a consideration. But it's, but it was very important that uh, you know, we had a good relationship with the bargaining unit in these discussions. A lot of the players on the negotiating team uh, you know, were probably hired at the time I was hired. So uh, we had a good relationship going back. And so that was important. I, I think they saw that we were uh, sincere about trying to solve the problem. Because you know, we don't, like I said, we don't have a pension plan just to have a pension plan. It's not really, uh, we, we don't do it for finance purposes essentially. We do it for public safety and public purposes. And we can't fulfill our mission as a municipality uh, as well if we can't uh, put the boots on the ground. So you know, essentially that, you know, you have to work with your police commission, obviously, uh, or specifically the chief in this case. Uh, but the commission was uh, involved in terms of, you know, articulating what they saw as the problem. Uh, you have to work with your chief elected official, uh, the executive branch. You want to bring in your outside professionals, uh, your actuaries. Uh, and then you have to uh, try, try to uh, be conscious of the cost, but yet still meet the needs of the bargaining unit. And then you have to have a uh, a compelling narrative uh, so that if you're out on the street somewhere and someone who uh, has a defined contribution plan at their employer, if somebody who works for uh, for BIC tells you, hey, wait a minute, you know, how come uh, you guys went to this when I have this? You know, you really have to have your narrative and your talking points down. And then you also have to be aware that uh, at some point you're going to deal with other uh, parties. You're going to have to uh, communicate it to your auditors and your notes to your financial statement. You're going to have to communicate it to the rating agencies. And in your case, uh, you know, I, I don't follow it that closely, but you know, uh, you'd have to communicate and put a compelling case for the uh, for the MAR board. So um, you know, there's a lot of uh, points that you're going to touch along the way. Uh, so you have to take all of that in consideration. And you know, to the extent it's going to take you time to build that uh, that base of support. I, I recognize that you're starting that journey now. You know, right now, you're probably looking for, can you get conceptual support as a government uh, to look at this? You've identified a problem. Can you get conceptual support to the point where you can actually have? You know, my sense would be, and I don't follow West Haven uh, closely, is, is then to have, you know, Mayor Rossi and the chief executive, as chief executive officer, you know, uh, work to kind of come up with uh, with, with a plan or, or that meets some of your policy objectives. So, so there's a lot of people that, that, that are going to have to touch this, you know. You, so to the extent that you can uh, you know, uh, define the problem, you know, get your arms around the data, hire or, or engage your, your actuaries on this. And uh, you know, not, to a, to a lesser extent, maybe your uh, pension investment managers, because you know, then your pension has to be managed in a way uh, that the assets are structured to meet your pension, your net pension outflows. But there's a whole series of folks that uh, that, that you want to engage. Uh, fortunately, as, as volunteer council members, that's not, that's not your role. So uh, lucky you, uh, it falls to the folks like, like myself and, and Jamie and others to kind of, to work out those details and then come back with a, with a plan that meets your policy objectives.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Hamilton, did you have a question at this time or?
No, my, I think um, Mr. Fitch kind of covered what I was going to ask about. Were there any pushback at the beginning? Were there officers that just, you know, didn't want to um, go with the um, pension? They were comfortable, you know, with they had? Um, you kind of touched on that when you talked about the voting process. Thank you.
Well, I, I could, I could just say there was a little bit of pushback uh, because what we found is there was about five officers that were adversely affected because, because um, of when they were hired, even though they were in the original DB plan. So again, we wanted this to work for everybody. So we actually carved them out and they agreed to actually go into the second tier DB plan. Uh, so we even made that work for them. Uh, then we had another officer who we hired uh, at a much later age, at age 60. Now, this is, I think is uh, is very telling of where we were at. What you would say, and somebody who's getting close to 60, why would you hire somebody at age 60 uh, to, to work as a police officer? And because we needed to fill uh, the slots. But that person uh, really was not going to be vested under that second tier. So we basically carved that person out and we basically said, you know, your contributions went into the DC, DB plan. And any new contributions, what we will do is if you leave, you won't be vested. We will credit you at um, at 4% a year. So essentially, we, we through, and again, this is having a good working relationship uh, with the bargaining unit on this. We essentially uh, were able to respond to every unique situation. And fortunately, there were only a handful of similar types. But the pension agreement actually in the appendix cars them out and defines what their benefits are and lists them by name. So that going forward uh, when a benefit needs to be calculated, you know, we can go back to that agreement and say, okay, this is what you're covered under. So um, so there was, to answer your question, there was some pushback. Uh, probably more so at the folks on the police negotiating team. Uh, and then that's where uh, I got called up for a cup of coffee and they explained to me, uh, the bargaining explained to me kind of off the record, you know, what their dilemma was. And I said, all right, let me see if I can uh, come up with something. And uh, fortunately, fortunately, we did. So uh, you know, but you will uh, get some pushback. Uh, you know, and I, I guess my, my message to you is uh, you know, see if there's a way you can solve it. Uh, and if there is a way you can solve it, um, you know, carve them out. Which, which probably is a little bit counterintuitive, although I'm not a labor attorney. But usually when you think of collective bargaining and that operative word being collective and then, you know, everybody's kind of in it. But you know, given, given what we were trying to accomplish and given what the union were trying to accomplish, understanding that, you know, if we didn't uh, come up with a reasonable accommodation, those folks would vote against the agreement, which was counter what we were trying to achieve in the first place. Uh, it actually, it actually worked out well. Your numbers, as the chief pointed out, are, are, are like maybe double Rs, slightly more than double Rs. So uh, you may have more carve-outs. But, but you know, the situations that you guys described about uh, you know, the water rescue and the other, you know, you're taking one of those uh, fears out of uh, those officers. And, and quite honestly, you know, anyone who, who even sells insurance, and I, I'm speculating a little bit because I don't sell insurance. The best time to sell life insurance is when your next door neighbor dies, right? And so to, to the chief's point about what happened to the officer who was en route to training uh, has a profound impact on the fellow officers. And at some point, when you start getting a tipping point where you have officers that are in the DB plan and officers that aren't, you know, they're interacting with each other on a daily basis. And they become much more aware of the differences in their benefit structure as they get older, as they work when maybe they were hired in their twenties. Uh, you know, you know, where they were more uh, motivated by the altruistic aspects of protecting the public.
So I just, um, Jim, just two questions really quick from what you're saying. So everybody on your police force currently has the same defined pension plan. There's not two. Because when we think about it, and, and we haven't really thought about it. So when I say we, just, you know, when people, that there'd be the officers now who have that pension. And if we were to bring on the other 40 plus, they would have a different one. But when you're talking, I just want the council to be clear. Maybe for selectmen, you can answer, or Kathy, um, I think we lost Jim. Everybody is under the same pension currently.
Uh, no, let me, let me.
Oh, here, oh, he's back. Great.
Let me make that distinction. Everyone hired, you know, uh, from 2011 back had, I'll just call it the original pension plan. Everyone in the DC plan got the amended pension plan. Or we'll just call it A Plan, B Plan. Uh, and then in responding to the earlier question, we actually accommodated a handful of folks that were in the A Plan that because of where they were, they were, they were largely lateral transfers into the DB plan. Found it more advantageous to be in the new DB plan. We allowed that movement. Uh, and then we made specific accommodations. But you know, and, and 15 years from now, everybody will be in the B Plan. Because the person who was 60 plus will probably would have retired. Uh, and then the other folks who we allowed to come in uh, will, will have retired. So uh, so basically, you know, and, and that, that is, that is somewhat common. Uh, you know, when you hear uh, articles or read articles and see news reports on the state of Connecticut pension, they always talk about, well, tier one, tier two, tier three, different tiers. So we ended up with a uh, you know, second, really a second tier. And uh, so, but I just want to, but most, most folks are either in uh, are, are in the A still, the B is catching up to them. But you know, another five or six years, they'll, they'll all be basically in the B plan, so.
So, okay, um, so I want to ask my question, even though that seemed like that was a question. I just wasn't sure that we all understood that there was actually a difference. When you um, when you calculate in your, in the new plan that you um, bought, that you established, um, what exactly are the years of service that are used to calculate? And do you just use the base salary or are you using overtime as well? And what is the um, year to acquire the pension? You know, is it 20 years, 25 years? When does that happen?
Sure. Uh, basically, the uh, the, the officers contribute to the plan and the town contributes to the plan. And the multiplier is, is 2% per year. Uh, so uh, so basically, you know, they could retire at 55 with 10 years of service and get 20% of their three-year average. Or you know, let's say somebody works 25 years, they get 50% of their salary. And the salary is based on, you know, all their wages with the exception of uh, um, the, what, what we call out-ofstation overtime or what maybe is typically referred to as special detail. So if somebody's working a road job, uh, the road job doesn't count towards their pension. But if they're working, you know, investigative overtime, somebody gets called in. So overtime is calculated in the pension, uh, as is uh, longevity. You know, somebody getting uh, you know, buying back the pension stuff uh, is not included in the pension, but, but overtime is. And uh, and also, you know, they're also paying the social security as well. So um, that, that's, I don't, I don't, do your officers pay in the social security?
With some, um, Chief Pernod, would you like to answer that?
The officers that are uh, enrolled into 401 also pay the, into social security. And the city has to match that at six point something percent also.
Yeah, how about the, how about the ones that are in your original defined benefit plan? Do they pay in the social security?
No, we are excluded from social security through a state uh, mandate. We, we are not allowed to pay into social security.
All right, so you got one of those 218 agreements, it sounds like.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, um, but it, but it. But in our case, you know, if you think about Branford's benefit structure, all the officers are paying into social security. And then all the officers have some form of defined benefit plan. They either have the A Plan or the B Plan, with the exception of of the one guy that got carved out at the four percent payout. Now, they're all contributing the same percent of salary. It's all in the same fund. And it's all managed by our, our pension managers and overseen by Board of Finance and the Pension Advisors.
Thank you. Do any of the other council members outside of the Finance Committee have any questions at this time? Okay. Chief Pernow or Fleming or Commissioner, do you guys have any questions that you'd like to ask Commissioner Butler?
Not at the moment. But I would like to add that there has been a lot of comments and whether disinformation regarding the current pension. We do not get any factoring in of overtime. It is base salary only on the, those that are on the current pension plan. I know that there has been questions from the general public as well as the council regarding that.
Thank you for that clarification, Chief. Chairman Quagliani, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 through you, Madam Chairman. One of the things that is uniform in the two pension plans in Branford is that the same earnings are used as the base. I think that's, you know, and thank you, Chief, for mentioning that. Because I think that that's another distinction between Branford and West Haven. Is that everybody's base, you know, or pension earnings are the same. The difference is the multipliers are different. And the disability benefit is different. So the A Plan has a two and a half percent multiplier. And the B Plan has a two percent multiplier. So it is, it is a different benefit. It is not as rich as the A Plan. But it is providing the benefits that the union was, was seeking. And it does address, and I can't underscore this enough, sort of the psychological factors of the risk of running out of money, bad investments, the risk of getting scammed, and the risk of disability.
Can you, Chairman, if you don't mind, just because he's talking about disability, I wanted to mention this and because you've mentioned it a few times. I feel like this would be the appropriate time. One of the things, and Chief Pernow, please stop me if I say something that's wrong. One of the things that I understand is that the police that are outside of the pension, who have the four oh one K, do have long term disability. But long term disability to me means that's long term. I'm going to have it until, you know, the end. That is not the case. I think long term disability for somebody who is injured on the job in West Haven, three years, maybe four, and then after that, they have to get disability, I guess, or money from the state. Can you tell me what the disability options are in your, like, what is the disability in your new pension? And can you also tell me, this is maybe a three part question, what did you offer your officers when they were on and receiving the four oh one K pension? Because my thought is, and I, and I know nobody on this call wants to hear me say this, but if this takes a long time, if this takes one year, a year and a half, we still have our officers going out there every day risking their lives with no security. So I'm just curious as to, did Branford do something different? Did you have a long term disability that if one of your officers were harmed in the, while on the job, you sustained them? You sustained them and you sustained their families? Did you get all of that? Because that was probably a lot.
Yeah, 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 I hope I did. So basically, you know, you're asking about what happens if there's an injury that results in an officer being permanently disabled for the long term, whether the D C plan, when we implemented it, offered any sort of, considered that or offered any kind of compensation towards that. And three, I think you're asking, well, what is the benefit under the B Plan, correct? Is that, did I phrase it correctly? Okay. So one of the things that, and I'll put this under the things we thought would work that didn't work, is that we, in the D C plan, we were going to offer the officers, you know, seven hundred dollars for them to go out and purchase their own disability policy. And I won't spare you all the details, but essentially, that was very difficult for them to get coverage. And, you know, then there was some talk about, you know, the town, you know, buying a policy, which would have resulted in a little bit of overkill because we would have to buy it for everybody, even the folks that were covered under the old D B plan. The advantage of the town buying it also was if you fell off a ladder at home, you probably would have been covered, whereas the pension plan only covered it at work. But, you know, to your point, Chairman Hosky, that, you know, that necessarily was not sufficient. You know, and, and again, that, that employee would then, after, would go through workers' compensation at some point, you know, when they, once they met their maximum, I forget the term, but basically, once they become as well as they're going to be, and if they were still unable to meet the physical requirements of the job, then we would have to separate service if they were eligible for social security disability. So, so again, we had, you know, social security has a disability benefit. But that's what they would have. But in the B Plan, that was one of the fears that we talked about trying to solve, is we solved that by basically saying that, you know, if you got, you know, disabled, I'll just use the example that the chief pointed out. Someone earlier in their career on a train, traveling to training, you know, so their work, it's in the course of their work, became disabled. You know, and let's say their salary was, you know, sixty thousand dollars. They would get forty percent of that for the rest of their lives. If they had worked for, you know, twenty-two years, they would get forty-four percent of their salary. So it's a minimum of forty percent or the actual multiplier, whichever is greater. So that's, that's how we, that's how we ended up dealing with it. It's very hard to come up with an effective way, I've found, to deal with the disability outside of the D B plan. And I've actually asked that question. I've actually gone to a couple of meetings at a Connecticut Public Pension Forum. And, you know, you have a panel up there. And when you ask that question, you all kind of, you know, look at each other. And then, you know, then you realize that there's, there's not a good alternative. Someone suggested you create a disability trust fund, which I was like, well, why would I do that? Well, you could acquire assets and you can invest it. And you could then provide disability benefits when they happen. I was like, yeah, but that's what the pension does. So it just didn't make sense to me. So you will solve your disability issue if you go back to a D B plan. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Chairman Quagliani?
Thank you, Chairwoman Hosky. Yeah, my, my, my comment really did revolve around the disability piece. But just, just to kind of put a little bit in perspective, as, as the mayor gave you the history from two thousand and nine to present, where we're, where we're here today. You know, I was fortunate to be a member of the West Haven Police Department for, for many years. And I, when I started in nineteen eighty-four, you know, I began to watch city government and city government and budgets. So it's, and again, good intended governmental people would look to, to short term answers to, to try to make sure that the community doesn't be affected by too much of a tax increase. So there were many conversations over decades where each year, as you know, we go through our budget and we determine what the actuarial number is for a pension calculation, right? And so it, more often than not, that number, if the number for that year would be million dollars, somebody would ask the question, well, how much could we put in so we don't have to raise taxes? And somebody would say, well, it's three hundred thousand. So that number, that three hundred thousand number would go in. And that would be year after year after year compounded by decades, where when we got to, you know, the Mayor Borer in the nineties, the pension was almost out of money. You know, more people to pay than actual money in the pension. So he had the foresight to bond the police pension for twenty years, which I believe next year is the, or this year, maybe the twentieth, the twentieth year of that. So, so we, we, and I don't think we're any different. Our community is not a whole lot different than a lot of other ones. But, you know, we had pensions or promises that we've made to officers that we couldn't fund. So now we're fortunate. I think for the last several years, we have put in that, that contribution, you know, the hundred percent contribution that we have to. The pension is, is at one point was, was, you know, under fifty million dollars. It's a hundred and thirty million dollars now. The pension at one point was twenty something percent funded. It's ninety-one percent funded now. So we're, we're in a good place because we made a lot of difficult decisions. But there's still more work to do. I think, I think the mayor said it best. You know, I was the police chief in two thousand and nine when, when the, you know, the, the executive at the time decided that they wanted to move away from the pension. And, and the mayor and I at the time aligned and said that we're going to have a department that's going to be transient and that officers are going to come and they're going to go. It's going to be difficult to recruit and retain. And, you know, ten years later, you know, we, we borne that out, as the chief has told us, you know, with those numbers. But I think this is a good first step. I mean, we've tried, you know, we put money in a pension study a little over a year ago. We put it out to bid. But I think this has been incredibly helpful tonight to have Branford give us their thoughts and ideas and how they move the needle. And I really do think that, that, you know, especially when, you know, at the time, it was cost neutral. So that's another way of saying that moving to a four oh one K did not save the city any money whatsoever. So why would we take that benefit away that those officers need and I'd argue deserve to not save any money? Didn't make any sense for me at the time. It doesn't make any sense for me now. So I'm happy that we took this first step tonight. And I do really think, I do believe the pension is open for negotiation. And I won't talk about that because I know I can't do that. But I do think the disability piece is really a priority piece that, that, that we need to look at. So again, I, I just want to thank, you know, the folks from Branford for, for being here this evening. Thank you, Councilwoman Hosky.
Thank you, Chairman. Are there any?
Joe Pernow, can I add to that regarding the disability?
Absolutely, Chief. Thank you.
Currently, the, for the four oh one officers, there is an eighteen month clause to be out on workers' compensation. And add on to that an eighteen month clause for being out on a disability. After that, we have gotten no clear answer what happens to the officer after those two eighteen months dents as far as a long term disability policy. Thank God we have never had to visit it, but we don't have an answer for anybody that wants it.
Can Lee or Attorney Hutchins, can you tell me or tell us, have we looked into providing any type of long term disability to our officers? Because again, you know, I said it a few moments ago. You know, with all of our best intentions, you know, we, we wish and we hope that, you know, we're able to bring this pension back. But every day, we have officers walking the streets and driving these cars with no real protection. Can you speak to that? You know, what, what can we do? You know, if this pension thing takes a year for us to get, you know, up and running or possibly even two years, you know, I, I, I'm gonna, you know, it's not going to be, you know, by January. So has there been anything looked into? You know, can we get something going? What is?
Hi, thank you. The city currently has a long term disability policy that provides forty-five percent of pay for two years, the officer.
Is this Attorney Hutchins? I'm sorry, or, okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're, everyone's aware who's speaking. Thank you.
I thought my name was on the screen. And thanks for having me. The LTD benefit for the first two years, the officer is unable to perform their own occupation. After the two years, they can continue the benefit at forty-five percent of pay, I believe through age sixty-five, if they're unable to perform any occupation, which is the social security definition. A lot of the towns for their disability retirement have that standard that you can't perform any occupation. The thought being in two thousand and nine that if an officer is unable to perform any occupation, they would get social security benefits at age sixty-five. My experience around the state has been in this ten year period since the towns were switching their uniform services to a four oh one, is that the LTD piece is lacking and that towns are moving to address that now by, I have various towns finding some way to get them into the defined benefit plan for a disability only or a piece. They would get a hybrid of a regular pension on the D B plan, enough to satisfy the IRS that it's still a qualified plan and get a disability retirement that way. Or there's another town in southwestern Connecticut did. They started a disability retirement trust essentially funded. So there's a lot of different options, but that disability piece is certainly something to be looked at.
Thank you. You were on another page, so I thought it was somebody, I thought it was caller five or four talking. But now I see your picture. I moved it over. Thank you, Attorney Hutchins. I was just like, I couldn't tell. Um, so I was about to ask another question, but I want to open it up to the council before I start rambling off my questions in my head, but still respecting the time. Does anyone else have any additional questions? I do have one that I want to ask. Okay. So my, my question is this, I'm not really sure who would answer it. But what are the, what are our chances that our actually would take half, you know, I think, I, I'm not sure, Chief Pernow, I think you said there's forty-seven or forty-eight of our individuals and want to create a defined pension plan? You know, is that a possibility or is it all or nothing? You know, would they want the whole?
I, I, you want me to try to answer that, Chairman Hosky?
I will, anyone can actually speak on it. I think we'd be interested in everybody's educated opinion.
I, I mean, I, I think that, you know, you're going to have to, that the city is going to have to do this in some sort of collaborative fashion with the, with the police union. Because basically, you know, there's a variety of ways that you could divide, you could create a benefit structure. You know, you're basically, as Jamie pointed out, as I pointed out, and the mayor indicated at the beginning of her comments, you basically are working with a pile of dollars. And then the question is, you know, so let's just assume the pile of dollars is a grocery bag for argument's sake. You can define the size of the bag. You can define the size of the bag, you know, and you could define that that bag's not going to cost more than 50 bucks. But the groceries that go into that bag really have to relate to things that your employees or officers want to buy. Okay, so part of it is trying to figure out, you know, what's a suitable structure? And it's kind of a give and take. So, so let's just say for argument's sake, City Hall, working with their actuaries, says, okay, I want to work within these bags. What sort of benefits can we offer? And our objective is, you know, to meet some of the financial and psychological needs of the officers. So right from step one, you know, there's got to be a disability piece in there, right? So, so, okay, so the disability piece has to go in that bag, all right? So that's going to take up room in the bag. So what else can we fit in the bag without overflowing the bag? And then that's where you start looking at, you know, multipliers, years of service, your pension formula. And then you kind of, and then you kind of play with it a little bit and you kind of come up with some options. And then you test the market, but in this case, if the market is really the bargaining unit in the process, to see if, if that's a product they're willing to buy, that's a package they're willing to buy, they're willing to pay you for those groceries. And once you essentially do that, then you kind of have the basis for moving forward. So, you know, there are a lot of possibilities that you can come up with. Your attorney, Mr. Hodgson, was talking about hybrid plans. You know, that, that is an option. But, you know, those are things that get packaged, you know, by your, by your actuary. And obviously, you know, that's probably an additional fee on top of their agreement. But, you know, they're the ones that are already doing your pension valuation for the folks that are in your original defined benefit plan. So what you would have to do is provide them with census information, specifics about the officer that was mentioned earlier that had 11 years and the officer that had mentioned five years. And what is the accrued liability of that? And I'm probably getting too much into the nuts and bolts, but the short answer is you have, you have options. You need to kind of define what, what it is, you know, what's your why, what's your objective, you know, and, and what do you have to offer to meet that objective? I mean, you already know that the disability is part of it. So at the get-go, like I said, disability's got to go in that bag. And then you kind of, and then you kind of work from there. And then you test that concept against the bargaining unit because if they, if they don't, if they're unable to then it doesn't matter how good your plan is. So again, and that, that's sort of the iterative nature of negotiations and exchanging plans and proposals. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much. Are there any other questions or comments before we adjourn?
I have one.
Lee Tierney?
No, Pete Masaro.
Oh, Pete Masaro, sorry. Yes, go ahead, Councilman Masaro.
I agree with Sean's say, but also everything is negotiable. I mean, there's ways of doing the pension where everybody doesn't get the diamonds. You got to start from the beginning and work your way up. You can't start off at the top. Listen, our police department, also the part of the fire departments, they need a pension plan because we're starting to get a revolving door too. I agree with Chief Perno. He has a bigger department and he has more people going around in the revolving door than I do. But the thing is this, you've got to start from somewhere. You got to start at the bottom. You don't have to have the Cadillac. But the men and the women of the police department do need a pension. I don't care what anybody says. The 401K is not working. So again, everything is negotiable on the table. It all depends what we put together and what we have and what we could afford. And again, the city, and you got to listen, 99% of the times, it's the city's fault that doesn't put the money into pensions. It's not the employees. It's the people who are running the cities because they don't want to raise taxes. They want to be the good old boys and that hurts the taxpayers and the employees. I've been saying that for the last four years I've been in office. It's not the employees. It's the people that are running the cities. And this time we got maybe a council and a mayor that cares about our employees to help them out. So we got to start from scratch. We got to start from somewhere. And it's great that Branford was here. And like I said, and I've been telling the council and a bunch of other people, our department has three different pension plans. There was the Cadillac, then it was the Buick, and now it's down to the Chevy, okay? So everybody's got a pension until, we were taken over until 2012 that they went to a 401K. But my pension is a hell lot different than the guy that has the Chevy. I'll be honest with you. You can't give the best of everything anymore. You can't afford it anymore. But still, you could put a pension together that everybody could afford, including the cities. And I think this is the best thing that we're going forward and trying to do this. So I got to say thank you, everybody. Thank you for the people in Branford for helping us.
And as a final note, if I, if I could add that, you know, I would encourage the folks at the, at the PD, you know, you know, they could, I'm certain our chief would, can, can talk to you. And also our former chief that was involved in this is now in North Branford. That's Kevin Halloran. Our current chief is John Mulhern. So they, they can kind of tell you more of the esprit de corps, morale issues that, that this change has, has brought about because, you know, they're closer to it than, than I am. You know, I'm, I'm looking at it like, what is our public purpose? What need are we trying to meet? And, and manage it through, you know, the town's liabilities and balance sheet. So that, but they're actually doing it from sort of the boots on the ground, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Jim. If there are no further comments, I just want to end by saying again, thank you so much, our visitors from Branford. We really do appreciate you coming on this evening and talking with us. You will definitely be hearing from us at some point to further pick your brains for more information. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I just want to make mention that right now in the city, it is the holiday season. There's lots and lots and lots of things going on. Chief Perno, please correct me if I give this information incorrectly, but I believe the police department will be at Walmart doing a collection this weekend?
I believe that's the beginning of next week.
Beginning, actually.
Right. I'm not sure if it's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, or, or Monday and Tuesday. But they're also, you may want to mention that the, the police and fire have collaborated with the Board of Ed and the PTA to do a Santa visit on Saturday. You may want to mention that.
I was going to, but you go right ahead and you finish that thought, Chief.
Right ahead. I'll only mess up the dates and times, so.
Okay, this weekend, this weekend, there is, at, gosh, Forest School, Savin Rock School, Washington, Pegels and Bailey, they will be distributing gifts in a socially-distanced manner. There's also Toys for Joy that is being hosted by the West Haven High School for children zero to 14. So if you are so inclined, they are taking donations. Generally, the Cassie, who does the band at West Haven High School, normally has a winter showcase and she donates proceeds to the animal shelter as well as wheat. That is not happening this year, so there will be a need there as well. So I just encourage the public, you know, to do what they can and if, that they do know somebody that is in need, to just reach out to one of these organizations to get them the help that they need. On that note, again, I want to thank everybody for joining this evening and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Councilman Donovan and firsted by Chairman Quagliani. All right, everybody. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening. Stay safe.
Bye-bye.